Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of the Constitution, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the heart.
Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Vido.
Present.
Counselor Lopez.
Here.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Here.
Counselor Brown. Counselor Bishop.
Present.
Counselor Tejada.
Present.
Counselor Abadana.
Present.
Counselor Robinson.
Here.
Counselor Pilar Tonda.
Here.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
And Counselor Recupero. Tell me if it's present, do you have a call, Madam Chairman?
For the record, Calvin Brown is out of state, so he will not be present today. Counselor Bishop.
May I ask for a point of personal privilege?
Go ahead.
And my reason for asking for this point of personal privilege is to address comments that were made on social media concerning a vote that I took here last, a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
Thank you. Just to set this up, so people at home know what I'm talking about, there was a vote taken here a couple of weeks ago regarding a discount for owner occupied properties in the city of Chelsea, a 10 percent discount. I voted for it and was dismayed to see online that Counselor Avi Adela put some comments on that were not only petty and personal, but also untrue. I have lived in the city for a good number of years, most of you know where I live, but if you were on the social media page, you would have seen a picture of my home, aerial picture, along with the pool that I have installed in my backyard. And Counselor Avi Adela wrote online that it's nice to know that District One City Councilor Bob Bishop will get a discount to fill up his pool next year. That is not only petty, as I said, but it's also untrue. If Counselor Avi Adela had done his homework, which, oops, which again, he didn't do, I have a meter on my pool, like many pool owners have, that is not included in any discount. So I'm paying whatever the going rate is for the water that's going into that pool. And to suggest that I voted for that discount for homeowners who have been living here all their lives and are paying exorbitant water rates because I'm going to get the discount myself is outrageous. I was elected as a city council from District One, and I promised them to do what was best for the people that elected me. My area is at least 70 percent owner occupied.
Two more minutes, Counselor. Two more minutes.
My area is at least 70 percent owner occupied, and most of the folks living in that area will enjoy that 10 percent discount. I've gotten many calls from people for this meeting tonight, saying, "Why is Counselor Avi Adela and other counselors, Counselor Robinson, opposed to me getting this discount?" I don't have an answer for them, but I'm sure we'll hear from them tonight and hear why they're against that discount. Well, good for them. I'm not against it, I'm for it. Insofar as the condo owners go, I would be in favor of a discount for them too, if a way can be found to determine who's owner occupied and who isn't owner occupied, and how much each unit is paying. I'm all in favor of that. If they're living here in the city of Chelsea, they should get the discount. So I'm not opposed to that, and I'm certainly not going to be opposed to people that elected me. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. This is not up for debate, so, okay, so, moving on.
First out of our business, memoriams and celebratory resolutions. First resolution introduced by Counsel Abadana, all members of the city council. Whereas the Chelsea Senior Barchi League is organized by the Chelsea Senior Center and has been in existence for more than 18 years, with participants ranging in age 55 to the 90s, and whereas the barchi season runs for 20 weeks, starting in May, with approximately 12 teams of four players, and its games have been held at Volk Park and Creekside Commons. And whereas, starting in 2017, the Chelsea Senior Center and Chelsea Community Schools have organized a Chelsea Revere Barchi Bowl Tournament, held at Volk Park, pitting Revere teams against Chelsea teams. Whereas, for the second year in a row, Chelsea has won the Barchi Bowl Tournament, and Team One comprised of Team Captain Judy Litwin, Donna Bon Giovanni, Ken Highland, and Janet De Calagero, won the tournament this year. And whereas, all Chelsea players are recognized for their athletic prowess and fierce competitive spirit. And whereas, the organizers of the Barchi Tournament include Elder Services Director Tracy Nowicki, Director of Chelsea Community Schools Bee Cravata, Natalie Pardo of the Chelsea Community Schools, Stephen Fielding of Revere Senior Services, Camilla Pensini Sembelli of Revere Senior Services, volunteers Nino Bon Giovanni, John Roberts, and Chelsea Barchi League President Clara Lander. And whereas, the partners of the Barchi Tournament include the Chelsea Department of Public Works employees with setup, George Athes for music, Mystic Valley Elder Services for catering, and Chelsea Police Department for the ice cream truck. Now therefore, let it be resolved that the Chelsea City Council congratulate all the players for another successful conclusion to the 2018 Barchi Season, and thank the organizers and partners for their time and effort.
Counselor Abadana.
Just wanted to get the names right on the second page, please.
Just the names?
Just the names.
All right. Judy Litwin, Clara Lander, Mandy Murray, Laura Kwikowski, Elaine Umentsky, Mabel Felino, John De Calagero, Sally Sherzy, Mary Anfiori, and referees John Roberts, Nino Bon Giovanni, and Stephen Fielding.
Those were the captains, and now these are the names also.
I didn't realize that.
Those were the captains.
Sorry. All right. So Team One, I'm going to start it all over, because I want to make sure that everybody gets their shine here. Team One, Judy Litwin, Donna Bon Giovanni, Ken Highland, Janet De Calagero. Team Two, Clara Lander, Irene Malachowski, Paul Murphy, Teresa O'Driscoll. Team Three, Mandy Murray, Jenny Amara, Pat Highland, Pam Chinelli. Team Four, Laura Kwikowski, Barbara Melvin, Jack Connors, Marion Durigamo. Team Five, Elaine Umentsky, Al Umentsky, Cindy Millman, Jean Zulo. Team Six, Mabel Felino, Mary Atkins, Curtis Dyer, Tony Duarte. Team Seven, John De Calagero, Mary Cescucci, Bob Litwin, Mary Caboni. Team Eight, Sally Sherzy, Richard Casino, Jerry Slater, Catherine Dwyer. Team Nine, Mary Anfiori, Carol Phillips, Jerry Di Stefano, Marina De Castro, and the referees, John Roberts, Nino Bon Giovanni, and Stephen Fielding.
Thank you. I think the motion to adopt under suspension, if there's no objection.
Seeing none. You have the floor, Counselor.
Sorry for the drama, folks, tonight, but I wanted to paint some great news or positive here, and it's great to see so many of our seniors here tonight on this issue. I brought this resolution just to congratulate the Barchi League that has been going on for so many years now, and just in the last two years has been having a tournament with Revere, and glad to, happy to say that, you know, Chelsea has brought them a couple of people, we beat Revere twice. I'm very thankful, because I won at that. I bet on you, I'm going to tell you who bet on Revere, you know? But it was, it's great to see that you guys won, and that you're having so much fun down there. I've visited a couple of times, and it's a joy to see you. And another resolution is going to be coming up tonight by my colleague, Counselor Tejada. It was just a great Saturday, because on that day, in the morning, I had gone to the Forbes site to do a site visit, along with planning members and zoning board members, to see what the development's going to be there, and I am happy to hear, or see, our planning board members, the volunteers and zoning board members, take such an active role. People don't realize, they not only spend long nights deciding what's going on, but there they are on a Saturday, and it was, you know, I was happy to see that our residents are putting in their time and effort, and not a lot of credit goes to them for doing that. So I just want to thank the planning board and zoning board for taking out their time, more time, to go and investigate these matters. On the way there, as I spoke to Counsel Tejada, we had the Chelsea Hill community out there painting the boxes that Mike McConan, former counselor, was doing, that had put out there on County Road, and then at the end, I go to the, you know, Barchi Tournament. And I just thought that, what a great day in Chelsea it was that Saturday, when so many events like this, positive events, are going on, and it just felt it necessary that recognition is given. We hear so much bad news, not enough good news of what is actually going on in our community, and I wanted to say, you know, congratulations to Chelsea, to keep the seniors keep on going, and win the next, win next year too. If at this time, we'd suspend the minutes, suspend the meeting, just so that we can have all the seniors up front and give a presentation of the resolution.
Absolutely. Absolutely. I don't have the resolution for the minute. Do you have the resolution? You have it, Roy?
Oh, sorry. So if all the seniors would come to the front, please. Tracy?
The second resolution introduced by Counselor Tejada. Whereas the Chelsea Hill community is a group made up of pastors, city councilors, and neighbors, all working together for one common cause, that being the improvement and well-being of our community. And whereas the Chelsea Hill community started a year ago and is working harder than ever to improve the area with bi-weekly police walks around the neighborhood. And whereas the Chelsea Hill community is helping the seniors with snow removal, is starting food drives with high-quality fruits, vegetables, and other necessities for those in need. And whereas the Chelsea Hill community honored the memory of those who served before us, like Mike McConan, by gathering a group of volunteers and completely renovating the flower beds that were placed on County Road, commemorating Mike and his contributors to our neighborhood. Now therefore, be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, wish to go on record to thank the Chelsea Hill community for all their good work, and to congratulate them on their first anniversary, and be it further resolved that the council recognizes the founding members of the Chelsea Hill community, Ellen Rohan Ball, Beth Novak, Yaya Noah, Louis Tejada, Irma Orellana, Emmanuel Castalone, Ymir Rodriguez, Alex Christmas, and Grace Mowini, for their level of dedication and care they have shown to the city of Chelsea and their districts. Signed by all counselors.
Chair recognizes Counselor Tejada.
If there's no objection, I'd like to speak on it.
Seeing no objections, you have the floor, Counselor.
So, Chelsea Hill community, you guys, it's amazing. You guys are awesome. Roy, thank you for that weekend, just in the conversation there, giving me a heads-up about the resolution. I think that, you know, you're working towards improving our area, up in Soldier's Home and surrounding communities, really, and we're working towards helping with the snow, help with the snow removal, some of the leaves. It's just amazing that a group of people got together last year, Columbus Day weekend, to have a little meet-your-neighbor thing, that Monica started over there, I see you, her and Pastor Ellen, and you guys, right there was the birth, I'm picturing you guys, that was the birth of Chelsea Hill community. And it, you know, there's community walks, pick up trash along the way, and now with selling food items at low cost, it's just, you're working towards improving the area, and I can't thank you enough. I mean, we're all, we're all in this together, and, you know, I'm just, obviously got to increase my participation a little bit, but, but no, you guys are great, Ymir, of course, being part of it. So I just want to thank you, and may we suspend the minutes for a minute to...
The meeting for a couple of minutes?
To take some pictures and...
Absolutely.
Say hello.
Okay.
Say hello.
Okay, it's official.
All members of the council. Whereas on October 19, 2018, at 9:00 a.m., the city of Chelsea will officially celebrate Arbor Day. And whereas, part of this special day, the Massachusetts Tree Wardens and Foresters Association will come to the city of Chelsea to plant a public shade tree. Whereas children, parents, community leaders, public officials, and municipal employees are invited to participate in the planting event. Whereas this event helps to ensure that the city maintains its status as a Tree City USA. And whereas this year, the city of Chelsea has officially been recognized as a Tree City USA for its 14th year by the National Arbor Day Foundation. And whereas being a Tree City USA gives Chelsea the benefits of having more state resources to further enhance the quantity and quality of trees in Chelsea. And whereas the Tree City USA award is given by the National Arbor Day Foundation in cooperation with the National Association of State Foresters and the USDA Forest Service to recognize environmental improvement and encourage higher levels of tree care throughout America. Now therefore, be it resolved that the city council would like to recognize the efforts of the Department of Public Works and the community for their work toward improving Chelsea's environment via an enhanced tree program, for securing the Tree City USA status for the 14th year in a row, and for having a successful 2018 Arbor Day event.
Do I have a motion from anybody? Adopt under suspension? I totally blanked out, I'm so sorry. Adopt under suspension unanimously, no objections?
No.
No, okay. Is there anybody here from DPW? Okay, just wanted to make sure. All right, so, moving on.
The next resolution introduced by Counsel Robinson, all members of the city council. Whereas in 2018, an estimated 266,128 new cases of invasive breast cancer are expected to be diagnosed in women in the U.S. And whereas National Breast Cancer Awareness Month educates women about the importance of early detection for breast cancer. And whereas, as we observe National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, we pause to remember all those who are fighting this disease, including families and friends, advocates, researchers, and healthcare providers, as well as those we have lost to breast cancer. And whereas the National Institute of Health, Department of Defense, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention will invest over $1 billion in research this year to fight this dreaded disease. And whereas screening and early detection are essential to our nation's fight against breast cancer, now therefore be it resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, acknowledge the importance of raising awareness of breast cancer in our community as we work to support survivors, those currently battling breast cancer, and those who might detect in its early stages, and that we recognize October 2018 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in the city of Chelsea.
Chair recognizes Counselor Robinson.
I adopt this unanimously under suspension. I'll be very brief. It's a disease that has affected our family, friends. I got to realize by going to treatments, how much cancer is really among us and our community. So I just wanted to make sure that the city council went on record in support of Breast
Final resolution introduced by Counsel Recupero, all members of the city council. Whereas October is the month that many of Italian heritage celebrates, with so many others, Columbus Day parades, and whereas Italian heritage is richly entwined in the history of our country, this heritage did not begin at and with the well-known voyage of Christopher Columbus, but continues to the present day in fields of exploration, science, the arts, literature, as well as business and developments. And whereas Italians and those of Italian descent have made remarkable contributions to our nation, the list is quite long. American history is replete with citizens of Italian lineage, including the signing of the Declaration of Independence and the formation of the U.S. Constitution. Italian-Americans have fought in every war, from the Revolutionary War to recent conflicts, and have served with distinction, including several Congressional Medal of Honor recipients. Italian-Americans were instrumental in building and developing many of our major cities. Italian immigrants build bridges and roads that we use today. Several major U.S. universities have been founded and directed by Italian-Americans, and valuable discoveries in science and medicine are credited to those of Italian heritage as well as. Now therefore be resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, declare October as Italian Heritage Month in the year 2018.
I'd like to adopt under suspension, if there's no objection, and to speak on it.
Go ahead.
For the last couple of years, Italian Heritage Month falls in the same time as Spanish Heritage Month. So that means all the Latins combined, and if you go to East Boston, when they have the Columbus Day Parade, now all the Latin countries are part of it, which is of our time, that they should all be recognized, that it is the Latin race. The Latin race is being recognized all combined now. Even in East Boston, through the parades, if you go, if you went there, you see all Central American countries, Latin American countries, doing the same thing. At one time, it was just Italian Heritage Month. Now it's the Latin Heritage Month. It's all of us, and it's a great thing to recognize. Without him coming here, we wouldn't be here. Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak?
I'd like to move a resolution from New Business, 11D.
Under suspension?
Under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing, anybody oppose?
I'd also like to pull out, while I'm at it, the one right under it, just because we have people that are here, and I want to make sure that they don't have to sit through the entire meeting.
Great, so to recap, you're pulling two resolutions out of order.
11D and 11E, under suspension, if there are no objections.
Seeing none.
11C also?
D and E.
D and E?
Mm-hmm.
Resolution introduced by Counsel Vido, all members of the council. Whereas the Massachusetts House of Representatives and Senate approved the addition of gender identity to the Massachusetts Public Accommodation Law, and whereas Governor Charles Baker signed this legislation, an act relative to transgender anti-discrimination into law, on July 8, 2016, and whereas the updated Massachusetts Public Accommodations Law has been in full effect since October 1, 2016. Whereas the Massachusetts statewide election upcoming on November 6, 2018 includes a ballot question seeking to repeal the provision of the Massachusetts Public Accommodations Law, and prohibiting discrimination on the basis of gender identity in places of public accommodation. Whereas repeal of those provisions of the Massachusetts Public Accommodation Law would be contrary to the values and principles that the city of Chelsea has long espoused, and that we are sworn to uphold. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council does hereby reaffirm our commitment to equal protection under the laws for all people, and be it further resolved that this council opposes any effort to infringe on the rights of transgender and the gender non-conforming members of our community. And be it further resolved that we, the members of the Chelsea City Council, do hereby pledge to support a yes vote on question three at the November 6, 2018 state election, and urge that voters of Chelsea to do so also.
Do we have a motion?
I must adopt under suspension, if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it. So just so everybody knows, there is a question coming up on our ballot in the election in November, and what this resolution is supporting is for us to vote yes on three. Yes on three was a law that went into effect in September of 2016, Senate Bill 2407, I agree, that prohibited discrimination based on gender identity in public places, such as hotels, restaurants, and stores. I feel that we've come a long way in protecting people's rights, and if we created something to try to protect people, why should we be going and taking steps backwards? We are a very tolerant community here, we are embracing of people from all walks of life, all genders, all ethnicities, and I just think it's a Chelsea thing to do. So I just want to give Olivia Walsh a shout-out for bringing this to our attention, and for your efforts in making sure that this was something that we were pushing forward. Thank you. Vote yes on three. I'd also like to suspend the meeting, just for a couple of minutes, so I could present the resolution to Olivia Walsh.
Yes, we can suspend.
Thank you.
Now we're back in session, and I will ask the city clerk to please read the second resolution.
Introduced by Counsel Vido. Whereas DVAM Domestic Violence Awareness Month... Whereas DVAM Domestic Violence Awareness Month provides an excellent opportunity for the residents to learn more about preventing domestic violence and acknowledge the efforts of our local nonprofit center, and provides confidential support, advocacy, and the education for people affected by domestic violence. And whereas domestic violence is widespread and affects millions of Americans each year, whereas children who grow up in violent homes are abused and neglected at a rate higher than the national average, whereas domestic violence costs the nation billions of dollars annually in medical expenses, police and court costs, shelters, foster care, sick leave, absenteeism, and nonproductivity. And whereas any coordinated community effort will put a stop to this crime, and whereas the Chelsea City Council is demonstrating their commitment to end violence against women and all gender-based violence by participating in a domestic violence training by Harbor Cove on Monday, October 15, at 6:00 p.m. And whereas the Chelsea City Council has collaborated with Harbor Cove to help spread domestic violence awareness, and will host Escape, a true story of survival, recovery, and transformation, a one-woman show in the Chelsea City Hall chambers on Thursday, October 25, 2018, from 12:00 p.m. to 2:00 p.m. Now therefore be it resolved that the Chelsea City Council hereby acknowledges the tireless efforts of Harbor Cove and its representatives to the Chelsea community in educating, advocating, and ensuring the safety of all victims of violence. Be it further resolved that in light of the DVAM Domestic Violence Awareness Month, Chelsea City Council and representatives of the city are fully committed to leading alongside the efforts of Harbor Cove to eradicate violence on women and all gender-based violence in our community.
Do we have a motion, Councilor Vito?
I move to adopt under suspension, if there are no objections, and I'd like to speak on it quickly, please.
Go ahead, you have the floor.
I'm just curious, is anybody from Harbor Cove still here? Oh, Karu, yes, okay. So, this is really important to me. This resolution is about Domestic Violence Awareness Month. My mother fled New York when I was just a little baby at the hands of abuse, and we had to start all over with nothing but the clothes on our back. So I was more than honored to partner up with Harbor Cove and make sure that we, as leaders in the community, are practicing what we preach. We just came out of a workshop where the majority of us were there, and we received a, we went through a domestic violence workshop. I also want to thank the city manager for partnering up with the council and with Harbor Cove in creating a one-woman show. Everyone is invited, Thursday, October 25, from 12 to 2, in the chambers. It's a one-woman show, to a student from Berkeley, I believe, and she'll be talking about recovery and survival, and so anyone, everyone is welcome to attend. That's all I have to say, unless anyone else has anything to say. I'd like to suspend for just a minute or two to present the resolution to Karu from Harbor Cove.
We suspend for two minutes.
And I should have said, thank you Karu and Harbor Cove for everything that you do. Thank you. Okay, public speaking. Anybody that wishes to address the council, please come up, take the mic, state your name and address for the record. Also, I'm expecting there'll be a few public speakers, so there's a list, a paper up there with a pen. If you could just write your name and address, so we can get your name properly spelled in our minutes.
Moren Pauli, 150 Captain's Row. There are a number of things I'd like to say tonight, but I'm going to confine myself to the things that I cannot keep my mouth shut for one more minute about. And one of those things is the behavior going on on this city council, which is an embarrassment to the residents of the City of Chelsea, I believe. Certainly, it's an embarrassment to me. What I'm talking about is the bullying and the ignorant behavior toward one another, especially as conducted on Facebook, which is totally passive-aggressive behavior. I have no problem with Facebook, but it's passive-aggressive behavior and shows that you don't have the guts to deal it out with the people involved, specifically with the women involved. I should inform you, speaking on behalf of myself only, that no matter how much I may disagree with a woman on a certain matter, especially a woman with the courage to put herself in the public eye and public service, no matter how much I may disagree with her, when you attack her in a bullying manner, it makes me crazy, crazier. And when I'm crazier, I'm also dangerous, not because I'm armed or going to physically, what would I do? Physically confront you? I don't think so, I'm not stupid. But what I will do is, I will organize against you, and I will call you out anytime I feel like it. Now as to this water business, the thing that offended me the most at the last city council meeting was these counselors calling each other out because all of you are either homeowners or you live in family homes. So what would we do? Have all of you recuse yourselves and not conduct business on that? That is crazy. I don't mind, in fact, I kind of value it a lot of the time, when we are dealing with matters of development and real estate, that we have two realtors on the council. I have been happy to hear from Councilors Tejeda and Avigeneta several times on matters that they would know something about that I would know nothing about. I object to any of you failing to recuse yourselves or failing to acknowledge a possible conflict of interest publicly and let the rest of us decide. I am opposed to that. When you have a conflict of interest, or a possible conflict of interest, or even the merest appearance of impropriety, you owe it to us. So when you have-
One more minute.
-a specific interest, thank you, Madam President, when you have an interest in a specific development or in a specific ordinance or order that you're proposing, that, you know, you are personally involved with on a business level, you have to let us know, period. Now I'm telling you right now, in terms of this council, just to return to my prior remarks, I'm not putting up with your bullying behavior toward the women, and as this is Domestic Violence Month, I suggest that you all clean up your own house to the extent that you're guilty. So I'm telling you right in this room, if you go after President Vito, if you go after Councilor Garcia, if you go after city solicitor Cheryl Watson Fisher, in my presence, I'm calling you out. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Roman A. Pucko. I live at 191 Linfield Street, Peabody, Massachusetts. I lived at 1 Chestnut Street from 1940 to 1949, and we had to move because of the Beacon Street off-ramp off of the Mystic Tobin Bridge. We were the last family to leave the area. We moved to 155 Chestnut Street at the corner of Dirt Street until 1975. Then we moved to Peabody, Mass, due to the violence, narcotics, prostitution, as well as bookmaking in the city. I obtained a bachelor of science degree in electrical engineering from Northeastern University in 1962. Thanks to the Reserve Officers Training Program at Northeastern, I received a commission in United States Army, and served as a commission officer in the Army Signal Corps during the Vietnam Conflict. I was stationed at an Army airbase in Hanau, Germany, and was discharged in 1963. I joined the Polish-American Veterans Post-13 in December of 63, and I'm a member of Post-13 presently. I am very familiar with Broadway from City Hall to Admiral Hill. I spent a lot of time at the PAV on 35 Ford Street, and up until now. My father was a schoolteacher in the city, and has a statue erected of him between Stebbins Fountain and the Pulaski Monument. General Pulaski was the father of the American cavalry in the United States Army. He fought for our independence and died in battle in Savannah, Georgia. He sacrificed his life so that we can live in freedom. My father, a vice principal of Chelsea High, did a lot of volunteer work and was known by almost everyone in the city. It was a family tradition in those days to have a family eat the evening meal together. Very often, my father was unable to attend due to his activity in the city. I'm here tonight to get involved with the reimagining of Broadway. According to the process prepared by the project team, Nelson Nygaard, a final concept was prepared, and a concept is just an idea. It means nothing. The Planning and Development Department made a presentation to the Parking Commission of this concept, and I'm sure they did not have complete understanding of it, or what they voted on. It's my belief that they lacked the knowledge and understanding as to what should be approved. This was then presented to the city council, again, same confusion.
One more minute.
It is my understanding that much of the study requirement be delayed and presented at a later time. I have a wealth of experience in traffic flow, understanding of the problems. I worked on the Big Dig. I explained things to Bectel Parsons and Breckenhoff. I talked to the city manager, who allowed me to share my experience and knowledge with the city council. They are elected by the registered voters of the City of Chelsea. Any flow, any plan will work.
10 seconds?
Some better than others. I will be contacting the city council individually. If you want to meet with me, I'll share my time, talent, and understanding. Any plan can work. You've got to make compromises. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a lot of people to speak, so please try to keep your comments to a limit. You have four minutes.
Hello, my name is Charlene McLean. I reside at 100 Broadway in Chelsea. I'm here tonight to offer some additional comments to follow up to the email I sent to all of you yesterday regarding my opposition to the recent vote to extend a 10% discount on water and sewer bills to owner-occupied homes, except for, in practical terms, condominiums. In addition to asking that the vote be rescinded for being blatantly discriminatory by creating a tiered system of resident homeownership, I would also suggest that a rescission is necessary in order to call for a subcommittee on conference that will comprehensively review the ramifications of this discount and any variation thereto, and provide adequate time for community input. I would also ask that the council take the time to meet with MWRA to find out why our water and sewer rates are always increasing so precipitously, and what measures can we take? What measures can the city and the residents of this city take to slow down the rate of increase? None of us wants to see our water and sewer rates constantly going up and up and up. I understand the impulse behind wanting to give homeowners some relief, but you have to understand that by giving relief to some constituents, you're only going to increase rates for other constituents. And, you know, giving a rebate to all resident homeowners doesn't really address the underlying issue that the rates are increasing precipitously, and we don't have a handle as to why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Catherine Anderson. I'm a seventh and eighth grade special education teacher at Brown Middle School. I live at 28 Warren Ave in Somerville, but I think I spend more time at 180 Walnut Street. I'm here to speak about the school funding that's on the agenda for tonight, and just to really urge the council to pass it as is. Chelsea Public Schools, our motto is, "We welcome and we educate all students." And welcoming every student who walks through Chelsea Public School doors requires a significant amount of resources. It means that we are using resources to find ways to teach kids how to read, but most importantly, it means that we're finding resources to build relationships with students and to help welcome them to the United States and to the Chelsea community. I really have seen amazing things in my times at Chelsea Public Schools. I've seen the students grow eight years of reading in two school years, once they've had the resources they need to learn how to decode what's on the page and be matched with books that are interesting to them. And I've seen kids form relationships with adults that I'm sure have gotten them through years and years of trauma and will help them be successful for the rest of their lives. So again, I'm just urging the council to pass that funding and really help support the youth of Chelsea. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Allison Cunio. I live at 126 Washington Avenue in Chelsea, Massachusetts. I wanted to lead another comment regarding the 10% water and sewer discount for owner-occupied single-family and multifamily homes. I just wanted to say, I'm the one that started the online petition that is circulating on social media currently, so I won't go into the details of what the wording of that says for the sake of time. I will say, as of currently, there are 133 signers who are opposed to this decision, and ask that it be reversed by the city council. I will provide the text of that petition to you all in an email, and I also provide a list of those who signed it. I am a condo owner, and I am opposed to this discount, even though if I were to benefit from it, even if I were to be included. I would ask that the city council, would they have approved this measure if the wording was instead not to give a discount to homeowners, but to increase the rates for landlords, renters, and business owners? I don't think that the city council voted on this in malice to hurt those parts of the population. I think instead they were attempting to protect more vulnerable members of this city, and I think that is commendable. However, I don't believe in taking money out of my neighbor's pocket so that I can live about 10% more comfortably. So I please ask it to reconsider that decision. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Marcel Kaiton, 126 Washington Ave, Unit 3. I'm here, again, to kind of echo what you said about the 10% discount to owners of property with individual meters. I think it's a bit unfair to a condo resident or condo owner like myself. I've been here a year. I know other folks have been here longer, but it's, I'm still an owner, an occupied owner. I feel like this is not an inclusive policy to other homeowners, and I think it's actually a detriment to Chelsea itself. Basically, anybody who's not getting this benefit, any business that's not getting this benefit, ultimately going to pass that to a consumer. Any property owner that has tenants, going to pass that to their tenants. This is, I think it just needs to be rethought, again, I think it's coming from a well place. It just needs to be rethought a little bit, figure out kind of what the incentive is. Assuming, the assumption is it's based for more homeowners in the Chelsea. Great, all for it, but I just think the body here needs to kind of come back, think about what this really is going to do. Definitely echo getting maybe someone involved, another outside third party, that can kind of put this in quantifying measures and think about the ramifications of this going through a city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Frank, 45 Jones Ave. I'm one of the renters up in Creteville. Not all homeowners live up there. I'm also a local rabble-rouser as of late, and occasional photographer. I'm here to speak against the 10% water cut that this board has given to a very small percentage of people in the city, and I stand here as a fourth-generation resident. One of the arguments that was made for this water cut was to help people who have been living here for a long time. My family's been here since the late 1800s. They worked in the mills. They worked in the mills down in Mill Hill. A lot of them don't own currently. A lot of people have been renting for a very long time. You're telling those people they have to pay for homeowners who happen to own homes even though they've been here for 100 years renting and working. You're telling immigrant families that because they're renting, their water rates are going to go up so some local homeowner's rate can go down. That's very unfair all around. On top of the whole condo concept, I remember this briefly came up at a subcommittee meeting several years ago and it was swatted out of hand simply because we realized that a 100-unit building, it would be very difficult to figure out who were the homeowners and who weren't and who was using how much water. Most people that own a condo know that they pay a percentage, they basically pay a percentage of their square footage for water because you can't figure out who's using what water in these big buildings. And that is why the condo owners who sit in this room and watch it from home aren't getting that discount. You can have a million meetings unless these buildings can break apart who gets what and who pays, who's getting what water, which they would love to do, by the way, because everybody I know who owns a condo gets upset. They all think that their neighbors are using two-hour showers because the water rate keeps them going up and up and up. They would have done it already, not to save that 10%. One of the biggest issues I have is homeowners already get multiple discounts in this city. I believe we're going to be up to 30 or 35% at some point for the homeowner exemption, which I am actually for because it's not your fault if you buy your home and your real estate value goes up. I know my parents recently sold, but one of the issues they had was the real estate taxes would keep on going up even though they bought their home for $21,000 in 1972. It's not their fault that those prices went up, but they could control how much water they used. They could put water control features in their homes. Renters have a much harder time putting water control features in their home. I have to get permission anytime I touch a pipe, whereas if somebody who owns a home in this audience, you can go home right now and call Ansar or whoever does the, whoever's handling the water stuff. You can have them come to your home and give you an assessment.
One more minute.
And say this is what you can do. One more minute. One, final thing I would basically want to get across. I heard early in the evening that we shouldn't criticize women in power. I'm completely against that. Anybody in power should be criticized. Councilor Vido is a very powerful woman. She could be criticized if she does something that somebody thinks is wrong and she could be praised if she did something right. I would point out we have Superintendent Mary Burke in the room. If she does something somebody doesn't like, they should feel free to criticize her or they should feel free to praise her as well. We have a lot of powerful women in this city, on top of the people that were mentioned earlier. We have Roseanne Bongiavani. We have Gladys Vega. We have the people from Roca. A lot of super powerful people. I'm not going to stop myself from criticizing that small group of people just because they happen to be agender. But I do want to point out that the majority of the people that voted for that do own homes and those who control the power, the level of power, really should not be exempting themselves from the pain of their neighbors. Because if you get your 10% discount and you're making the decisions, you're going to think less about fixing the problem because in your head, you already fixed the problem. Meanwhile, people like me are paying more and more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, the tallest guy in Chelsea, so it's difficult. Chris Asante, I own 38 Hawthorne Street. I want to touch on two things: homeownership and the sixth district of Chelsea. I'm here speaking for myself as a homeowner, not any other homeowners. I do know some echo the same kind of feelings I have. Last week was a tough week of debate as well as name-calling and decisive politics after the ZBA votes. I want to make one thing clear as far as the meeting last week. At no point in that meeting were renters or citizens needing affordable housing insulted, degraded, et cetera, at the meeting last week. Almost all you homeowners who spoke there wanted to promote homeownership, period, and many of us asked if we could make this project an affordable homeownership one instead. At the end of the day, both sides spoke and specifically the residents in Mill Hill spoke, who are the ones being affected directly by this. My main word of the night for whoever showed up was compromise and it's something Chelsea has done a poor job of lately, just as our nation has. For the last couple of years, many organizations around Chelsea, specifically Green Roots, our environmental transit organization, several city councils and City Hall have pushed an agenda of mostly all affordable housing coming to Chelsea. The amount of over-correcting Chelsea did recently in response to rising rents and what we've seen in cities around us like Somerville, Boston, et cetera, has created an us-first-them mentality, I feel like, in this city. Homeowners and many market-rate renters are coming out and saying, "Hold on a minute. Green Roots doesn't necessarily speak for me." I will take nothing away from Green Roots and the work that they have done with the environment, access to waterfront, transit advocacy, et cetera, but when members of the organization come out openly on social media and local periodicals calling many of us homeowners racist, classist, gentrifiers, and many other insulting statements, you're starting to see us finally push back. I know for myself and many others here, if we spoke the way that some Green Roots members do on social media, we would be promptly fired from our companies, period. If Green Roots is the official affordable housing advocacy group for Chelsea, then come out and say it. Change the website, release where the nonprofit donations are coming from. How much are you receiving from Eastern Salt Company? You're almost your number-one legacy donator. How much? That's what I'm wondering as well. Are there donations from Massport coming in as well? Because I hear a lot of silence on that issue lately from them. That was my piece on defending myself and other homeowners. Pushing 100% affordable housing and not coming to the table to support market-rate condos and affordable condos does not make a good partner to deal with, especially if members of your organization call us racist if we try and defend homeowners' rights. There has to be a middle ground here and there has to be some members of the Green Roots organizations as well as councils that will come to the table.
One more minute.
Okay. I'll never understand why at the end of the day, we all support DACA, we, I mean, the, you know, Dreamers, we support asylum seekers and immigration rights and making borders a little more free for people to come in, but I can't move one mile across the border to Chelsea without being called a million names and ostracized. Last thing I want to do is touch on District 6. I don't have much time on this. The plight of District 6 is terrible. We have the most violent crime, the least homeownership, and the most pollution. Anyone can go on the See, Click, Fix app right now or on the regular Chelsea Facebook and see what's going on there. First-issue Massport, I won't get into that, but someone, something has to get done on that. I don't have this time. Crime, the best thing that's happened in the past three years in my neighborhood is MS-13 has taken over. Eastside 18th Street gangs out, crime is down because they run the streets, period. Hawthorne Street, the Shirtlift Street, from marginal all the way up, and I probably shouldn't talk about that openly, but MS-13 runs the neighborhood completely. I've talked to a police officer, one police officer in particular, I won't say his name, who's very candid. We do not do uniform patrols on Shirtlift Street in particular because we're asking for trouble. Jesus Christ, we have to live there. That is what I'm talking about. And the pollution that we have to deal with in District 6 is ridiculous from the airplanes flying over nonstop and I demand that our council come to our aid on getting noise abatement, legitimately noise abatement. I understand that we get $6.5 million or so in excise tax from Massport and everything else, so we don't want to rock the boat. Well, then you take that money and you start putting it in our houses because right now Dreamliners are flying over my house. The new Dreamliners. They shake it to the foundation, to the fieldstone, and Runway 33 was built last year, which flies directly over Chelsea. They took our abatement away in 2015 and then built that runway. It's called switching bait politics. So I'm sorry. That's all I have. And then also, I disagree with Tom Embers in a lot of things, but I do support him for his intervention.
My name is Suzanne Perry and I live at 160 Carmen Dan Sway in Chelsea. I won't repeat what everybody else has said here about the 10% discount for water and sewer for homeowners. I'm a homeowner. I guess after even speaking to a lot of my neighbors today, I'll speak just for myself. I've been a homeowner here for 15 years. I pay taxes, I vote, I go to the market basket, I walk the streets, but my choice 15 years ago was to buy a condo, not to buy a house. I had had a house, I thought it was time for a condo. 15 years ago, I didn't know that the fact that I would share a water meter would be a really difficult problem. I should tell you that any thought that that can, that this can be fixed because of what a previous speaker said about percentages of ownership is quite, it's a lofty idea, but it's an idea that I think won't work. So something needs to happen here because I consider this to be a basic issue of discrimination and unfairness, and I'm sure you didn't intend it to be that, but that is what it turns out to be. And, you know, this is my home and everything that I do revolves around Chelsea. My friends are here, a lot of them, but we are going to be taxed for something that we should not be taxed for and others are benefiting and it seems rather random to me, even though I'm sure the intention was good. So I felt obligated to say something this evening before this meeting was over and I can see that there's a lot of support in the room from the women and men who spoke about this same subject. So thank you very much for your attention.
Anybody else for public speaking? Going once, going twice, that portion of the meeting is closed.
You have the approval in a minute for regular meeting, September 24, 2018, and a special meeting of October 1, 2018.
I have a motion. Counselor Garcia.
I have a motion to accept and file under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections, we're moved.
Communications from the city manager. First communication, notice of waiver intent pursuant to the Administrative Code Section 1, 1202, inviting to notify you of my intention to hire Ms. Veronica Sosa, 12 Pond Street, Boston, for a part-time position of Management Assistant, Graphic Designer, and Recreational Cultural Affairs Division, and to grant her a waiver for residency requirements set forth in Administrative Code Part 4, Section 1, 1201. There were Chelsea candidates for this position, however, Ms. Sosa has far superior design and web management skills and experience that other candidates. She also has helpful language abilities. A copy of Ms. Sosa's resume is attached.
Suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing none, so moved.
Is there an order coming? Are you granting the, granting the waiver? Accept and file?
Yep.
It's a seven-day notice. Notice of waiver intent, dear councils pursuant to the Administrative Code Section 1, 1202, inviting to notify you of my intention to hire Mr. Benjamin Keers, 5 Cutter Park, Somerville, Mass, for the position of Planner, Project Management and Development, and Planning and Development, and agreeing him a waiver for the residency requirements set forth in Administrative Code Part 4, Section 1, 1201. A copy of Ms. Keers' resume is attached. There were no qualified Chelsea residents and according to Section 1, 1202, request that you provide me with any comments on the proposed waiver within seven days.
Counselor Robinson moves accept and file under suspension.
Quarterly hiring report pursuant to the Administrative Code Section 1, 1202, I have enclosed the required statistical quarterly report on hiring for the 12-month period from October 1, 2017 through September 30, 2018.
Counselor Robinson.
Accept and file communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Request to appropriate Commonwealth Transportation Infrastructure Funds. Dear councils, I'm writing to request the City Council appropriate $65,668.60.
Chair recognizes Counselor Bishop. Can we, there's something coming up on the new business, so do you want to accept and file it and then move? You want to move the communication and then the, okay.
Appointments to boards and commissions pursuant to Section 4, 2 of the charter city of Chelsea, inviting to recommend following individuals to boards and commissions in the city. For appointment to the Human Rights Commission, Ms. Fatima Malaba, 9 Garland Street, Chelsea, to fill an unexpired term of Marie Bellin Powell, who has resigned. This term expires on June 30, 2019. For appointment to the Chelsea Historical Commission, Mr. Alan Mervengolo, 165 Carter Street, for a three-year term expired 2021. Copies of the resumes are attached.
Counselor Robinson.
Move to a second reading if there are no objections.
Next communication, extension of contract for the fire chief. Dear councils, I'm writing to inform you that I have extended the contract to the fire chief Leonard Albanese for a period of three additional years to cover the period July 1, 2019 through June 30, 2022. A copy of the new contract is attached. According to the chief's covered contract, which expires on June 30, 2019, I am required to notify him by the end of January of 2019 of my intention to renew his contract. Pursuant to that clause, the chief and I began discussion about an extension and we recently agreed on a new three-year term. The contract includes a 3% increase for the first year of the new contract with the subsequent increases to be determined consistent with salary adjustments to other department heads. Have been extremely satisfied with Chief Albanese's leadership of management of the fire department since his arrival in 2016. I believe this extension is fully justified.
Counselor Robinson.
Move to accept and file a communication under suspension if there are no objections.
Seeing no objections.
Zoning amendments. I'm writing to request that the city approve some zoning changes in the ordinance.
Counselor Rodriguez.
We raise the rest of the reading.
Raise the rest of the reading.
Move to a subcommittee on conference.
Under suspension.
Can you schedule a public meeting also?
Has to go to the planning board. We need to have a public hearing on it also when it comes back.
Okay, but he's sending it to the subcommittee on conference.
He sent it to the subcommittee on conference.
Correct. And then we'll schedule a public hearing.
You want to do it after?
But let, we'll just to the subcommittee on conference and we'll figure out the details there. Thank you, counselor.
Okay, let's see where we are. Sit on communications. Communications and petitions to the council. We have a copy of a communication received from Lisa Morales regarding discount for single-family owner-occupied water and sewer.
Is this part of those? An unsigned communication?
These are emails. We've, we've accepted emails, what names.
How do they get people?
The email was sent to the office.
They were sent to the, they were sent to Counselor. Well, we receive copies of these as well. I did receive these copies as well, but I mean, I'll accept them. I don't want to, we have an email for constituents to reach us.
Anybody accept and file a communication?
Is there a motion to?
We've never read communications.
No, we have. I'm not, I'm not contesting that.
Then accept and file.
Generally, don't read communications unless it's requested, right?
I make a motion to read the letter, email.
It's down here. Yep, it's down here.
Are we going to read everything? Unsigned communication, Councilors?
Well, technically, we've been doing that. We got our financial orders, then on sign, we move automatically to conference.
Counselor President, I make a motion to consult with legal.
And it's really not a legal thing, it's just a matter of whether or not we want to accept them. I mean, I don't have a problem with accepting the communication. I mean, can we just summarize it for the public so we don't have to sit here and read these wrong letters? Counselor Maganeda.
There are several emails and some of them have taken the time to break, to be announced, and they, I think the transparency is showing right. Additionally, we also have one from, an email from Community Connections also. So again, a couple of weeks ago, we've had, I remember specifically, Beth Novak emailed this community, this council, and Counselor Bishop asked for that letter, email, to be read. I ask that the same courtesy be done for these residents who emailed the council and they are communications to the council. They're not unsigned, they have email addresses with signatures at the bottom.
Okay, so for the sake of time, because at this point, we could have read both letters by now, let's just read them.
I'm writing to you in regards to the recent vote allowing single-family owner-occupied homeowners to receive a 10% discount on their water and sewer bills. For many reasons, those who voted to approve this significant discount provided to not only be self-serving but also ignorant and thoughtless of how this will affect the majority of the Chelsea residents. I've been a Chelsea resident homeowner at Boxwork Condos for the past 10 years. I have been a Chelsea resident homeowner at Boxwork condos for the past 10 years. I pay my taxes, don't receive city trash pickup, and now do not have access to a homeowner discount, because like almost all condo associations, we are not on separate water meters. My last month's water bill was $150, yes, $150, and I live alone. Also, in order to compensate for your hefty discount, I checked and saw that who voted yes are single-family homeowners, the remaining residents who are going to have to shoulder your privileges. Yes, your privilege by paying more. I see how many of you write on your political Facebook accounts that you are of the people and by the people, and that you always look out for Chelsea residents. Well, this vote clearly proved to me and many other residents, including my whole condo association, that we don't count on our needs, and our needs don't matter. Our condo association is made up primarily of those who qualify for income-restricted condos, yet those who can afford single-family homes benefit even more. More people in your pocket, less than ours. And I have to say, what utterly disgusts me most about this vote is that you are taking a card from Donald Trump's playbook, not caring about our residents, and hurting, hurting those who are already vulnerable. Now, I am fortunate to be able to financially weather an additional increase in my water bill due to your privilege, but the majority of residents who don't be able to, quite frankly, this has become a gross, self-serving example of lack of equity in this city, which mirrors the national political stage. I rarely speak of our political issues, and I heard that even if I had gone to the hearing where residents were able to speak about the issues, the majority of your city councilors weren't even there. This vote was really triggered and nerved in me, and similar to, similar to when the national midterm elections roll around, and we'll see you up for reelection if this thoughtless and uncaring broadcast a shadow on you. If there are any way to retract this vote and thoughtfully come together and actually hear what residents have to say, and strategically think of a plan to lower the extremely high water bills, then I urge you to do so. I would expect political leaders to admit their mistakes and take the necessary measures to make the equitable.
Do you want me to read the next one?
Go ahead.
I'll read the next one to give my, Mr. Clerk, a break. The next letter is received from Cara Cogliano. Good morning, I'm writing on behalf of the residents of Chelsea that often come to Chelsea Community Connections for assistance and support. It was brought to my attention that there was a city councilor vote last night regarding a water sewer bill, 10% discount for homeowners or owner-occupied multifamily units, without thoughtful investigation, consideration, and informative data on what the impacts would be for others that don't fall into this category. I often have residents in our office looking for assistance with their bills, heating, utilities, mortgages, insurance, which I refer them to CAPIC or the Neighborhood Developers' Raft Program, to help maintain and support their living situations. What many social service programs are constantly doing is trying to prevent homelessness for families. I believe there are many people in this community who do not fully understand the expense of water and sewer. It would only be fair to provide informed information to even the rental community. Landlords will see a significant increase in water sewer bills, which will give them justification to increase rents, which again leads to people not being able to afford living in this city. Is there a mentality within the council that your work reflects on preventing homelessness for residents of this city? The money to discount this cost is going to be at the expense of other entities, such as the Chelsea Housing Authority, the Chelsea Jewish Nursing Home, the Soldiers' Home Elderly Supported Housing, and even longtime landlords in Chelsea. Why would you vote to put the burden on them? I would hope that the city councilors would take a step back and look at what benefiting some does to not benefiting others. I am a tenant renting, renting office from a landlord in this city with a fixed program contract income that has not increased or changed since 1997. I too am at risk for losing a community support program if my landlord finds a water sewer increase reason to raise my rent above and beyond what we can afford. There has to be more thoughtful investigation into this matter. I appreciate your time and attention.
I need others on those. Accept and files.
These are both accept and follow. Yep, thank you.
Your next communication, a copy of a communication received from City Clerk Park and Clerk Jeanette Centron White regarding a warrant for the state election, November 6, 2018.
I got a motion.
Accept and file.
Something coming up on the new business.
Accept and follow communication, something coming up on the new business.
We have final communication received from City Clerk Park and Clerk Jeanette Centron White regarding the actions approved at the September 25, 2018 trafficking park and meeting.
Counselor Robinson, most accept or follow communication. No objections.
We have a late communication, one, two, three.
Oh, wait, it's the community.
Four, no, but after communication.
Any objections to late communications? I think you do have copies of them. Counselor Tahada is objecting to the reading of the late communications.
Second readings, under second readings, we have appointments to boards and commissions. For appointment to the youth commission, Ms. Medina Hansen. Appointment to council elder affairs, Ms. Jean Chapman. Appointment to council elder affairs, Ms. Mary Ann Winship. For appointment to the Chelsea Cultural Council, Ms. Carolina Anzola. For appointment to the Chelsea Community Schools Advisory Board, Ms. Anne Walker Arback.
And for the record, one of those appointments comes with a residency waiver. Yes.
On the appointments, Bobby.
All of them.
All of them.
For each one?
Well, if they're not from Chelsea, I don't want to vote for them to be on any board.
All right, so we're going to do them individually.
The Chelsea addressed ones, they're all fine with me.
Love you.
On one roll call, and then we can do a separate roll call.
Are you okay with that, Counselor Bishop, if we do all the Chelsea residents on one vote? Okay.
Okay, so you have, to the youth commission, Ms. Medina Hansen. Ms. Jean Chapman, to the council elder affairs, council elder affairs, Ms. Mary Ann Winship, and the Chelsea Cultural Council, Ms. Carolina Anzola. Okay, roll call, Chelsea residents. That's Leo Robinson requesting? Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tahada.
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10 in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted under Chelsea residents. And now on the separate one would be.
Anne Waller.
Community Schools, Anne Waller. Who moved roll call on that?
Counselor Bishop.
Bobby, who have a bishop?
I don't know.
Roll call.
Counselor Bishop, I'd say it was him. Yes.
I just want to make it clear that I am opposed to anyone serving on any boards and commissions who are not from Chelsea. And I think those, those boards and commissions, all of them, should be reserved for Chelsea people, and I think we could find someone locally to fill this position.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No criticism of the person involved.
Thank you, Counselor.
Counselor Vido.
No.
Are we voting for the school now?
Yeah, for the non-resident.
Counselor Lopez.
No.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Bishop.
No.
Counselor Tahada.
No.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
No.
Counselor Recupero.
No.
One, two, three, four in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six opposed, one absent. Motion is defeated. We have now the late order introduced by Counselor Avellaneda, order that the Chelsea City Council increase the fiscal year 2019 school department original appropriation from $91,200,000 to $92,126,109, reflecting the increase in chapter 78 of $630,084 and $296,025 in transitional relief funds.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Accept on a roll call vote.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tahada.
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. 10 in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion is adopted. Final order, under second readings, order that the, an increase in the fiscal year 2019 school department original appropriation from $91,200,000 to $91,830,084 for a net increase of $630,084 attributed to an increase in fiscal year 2019, chapter 78.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Motion to adopt on the roll call vote.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tahada.
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero. 10 in favor, none opposed, one absent. Motion adopted.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Take item M out of order.
Which one, Bobby?
M.
M. We want new business now.
Okay, I'm actually going to rule that out of order. If we wanted to reconsider a vote, then we could have done a motion to reconsider. I don't think we should set a precedent by filing an order after the fact, something goes through that we don't agree with. I think that if we, so I'm going to rule this out of order.
I'm asking for clarification. I don't understand the, the thinking there.
Okay, so the thinking is that the majority of this council voted in favor of something, and it is adopted, and if there was something that needed to be changed, we could have done a motion to reconsider, as you've done in the past. You have 24 hours from the last time we had our vote to file something with the city clerk, and that wasn't filed. I don't think that we should get into the habit, whenever something doesn't go our way, to file an order repealing a vote, because then we'd be here forever, never getting anything done.
Well, that's democracy. I think you're, I'd like a roll call vote on that ruling, because that's why.
You're more than welcome to challenge the chair.
I challenge the chair on the, the calling that this order is out of order.
The motion by the council president was to rule item 11M out of order. The chair has been challenged by Counselor Avellaneda. A yes vote would be to uphold the challenge, a no vote would be to agree with the chair.
A no vote.
A no vote, yeah, can we clarify that?
A yes vote upholds the chair, a no vote would be not to.
Not to uphold the chair.
Right.
So I'm voting yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Can we speak on that?
There's no debate on this challenge, no. Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
No.
Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tahada.
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda.
No.
Counselor Robinson.
No.
Counselor Pilatanda.
No.
Counselor Garcia. Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
One, two, three, four, five, six in favor, one, two, three, four opposed, one absent. The chair's decision to rule it out of order was upheld. 11A, first item on new business, order introduced by Counselor Vido, order that the warrant for the state election, November 6, 2018, be accepted.
And a motion. Counselor Robinson, oh.
Roll call vote on the matter.
And can we attach the communication to it?
Attach it. Yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Vido.
Yes.
Counselor Lopez.
Yes.
Counselor Rodriguez.
Yes.
Counselor Brown, absent. Counselor Bishop.
Yes.
Counselor Tahada.
Yes.
Counselor Avellaneda.
Yes.
Counselor Robinson.
Yes.
Counselor Pilatanda.
Yes.
Counselor Garcia.
Yes.
Counselor Recupero.
Yes.
10 in favor, none opposed, one absent. The warrant has been approved for the state election. Item 11B has been withdrawn from, like, you don't want, 11B, yeah, that's the $65,668. You don't want to act on it? Yeah. You want this to go to the committee on finance?
No.
No, you don't want to act on it at all, yeah. You don't want it before us. Okay. The next order introduced by Counselor Vido, whereas the Chelsea City Council has authority to adopt ordinances to protect the health, safety, and welfare of all residents of the city of Chelsea, whereas the city of Chelsea wishes to adopt new zoning rules to properly regulate the Naval Hospital Residential District and to further its downtown revitalization.
Counselor Rodriguez.
I motion to move to subcommittee on conference.
Yeah, we sent the communication to subcommittee on conference.
You want to send this, send it to the conference.
Send to suspension.
Okay. Order introduced by Counselor Recupero, order that the city manager explore the possibility of property owners who make improvements to one, two, or three family homes, condominiums, or small businesses to apply for a limited-term tax relief similar to tax increment financing.
Chair recognizes Counselor Recupero.
There's no exception.
I'm not even there yet. Any discussion? Any discussion? Please.
This order helps. We seem to give everybody else everything. We give businesses, we give everybody everything, except the people that live here, or the people, including business or anybody that does dealing with our city. Maybe it's time, they're going to say it's against the law, it can't be done, this can't be done, but in this world, if you never try, how do you know it's never going to be done? You know, we should try to be fair and equal to all, to the businesses, to the homeowners, to the, anybody that does any type of work in this house should get something in return. Big business does it, they get a TIF, they get money off, but it's because they fixing and they giving to the city. The homeowner and the businesses and everybody else are giving to the city. You know, they, they here, they doing the same thing, they giving to the city, so why shouldn't they at least explore the possibility, if there's any way? This doesn't say, this just says, explore the possibility of trying to do it. Thank you.
Any other discussion on it?
No other discussion?
Counselor Robinson.
I'm, I'm just getting a little concerned that we're kind of traveling in a place that puts this council in jeopardy by asking for the, talking about the 10% increase, that the people in this community should support homeowners who have two families or three families, that the rest of this community should subsidize their properties on the backs of others, and we got to spread the money around to be able, to the other people who are not eligible for those types of programs. I'm concerned in regards to this, that we're kind of traveling in some murky waters, so I'll be voting against this.
Anybody else wish to speak on it? Counselor Pilatanda.
I mean, I hate to take sides with either counselor, but, you know, they're both right in one sense or the other, but, you know, the city isn't in the process of becoming a bank, where we can lend money to everybody that needs money for something they need done. Yeah, granted, I own a single-family house, and, you know, I would like somebody to help me out with, you know, when I do renovations to my house, but like I said, the city isn't in the market of giving money out to residents or businesses at a low-term interest rate to help them, you know, do their house or business over. Like I says, we're not a bank, if we keep lending money out to everybody in the city that needs something, when the time comes and the city needs something to fix a road or a sidewalk or something else that needs to be done, there's no going to be any money left over to do that. left over to do that. Thank you.
Council Tahada.
Yeah, I agree with what Joe and Leo just said. You know, running a city, as I've mentioned, as I've said before, it's no different than running a household. You have a certain amount of income that you need coming in. I understand that this 10% discount is a little controversial, and I'm hopeful that we're gonna have a meeting to discuss it further, even though it's already passed. Either way, yeah, we can't keep, you know, when you repair your house, when you fix your house, you get your increase by the fact that your house is worth more. When you buy a condo, you buy a condo because you want an easier lifestyle, you don't wanna have to worry about the shoveling, the snow, and all that. And the way the budget, I mean, I've been doing real estate for 25 years, the way the condo fee is set up is to benefit all of the residents and to give everybody a sort of discount when you're buying in bulk, insurance, water. So I'm just saying that I agree with my fellow councillors that, you know, there is a limit to how much we can give back, because if we give back too much, then there's gonna be a deficit, you're gonna see roads getting hurt, you're gonna see things that need to get done that are important not get done because there's not enough funding, so.
Thank you. Council Arizona.
I'll be voting no. There are standards that are had when we give TIPS, as they're called, and it's a balance because we ask normally businesses to invest in the city, further invest, and in exchange for that investment and a limited-time tax break, we get jobs, and they have to promise that the jobs that they say are actually gonna happen. There have been times when some TIPS were rescinded because they didn't meet the job quota. So not all TIPS actually go to full fruition, and they're rescinded. We ask, we have given TIPS in the past because they are expanding on an existing structure or existing structure. And the TIF is only given on the actual expansion part, not the piece that's already there. So if you add an addition, you get it. Now, there is, I can't think of any benefit that a TIF given to a homeowner who is putting a new deck on his house, or putting in a new bathroom, or remodeling a kitchen, there's no benefit that the city is getting out of it. Now, if you wanna go down this road and say, hey, you have a single family, and you want to expand, and have a conversation about making it a two-family, and you're gonna provide a low-income housing on that second part, maybe, we'll think about it. But that's not what this is, nowhere in there. So where is the benefit that we get from the TIPS on businesses that you're getting from a homeowner? Doesn't exist. Thank you.
Anybody else? Council Bishop.
If memory serves, I mean, not too many years ago, the Community Development Department had programs just like this to encourage people to fix up. Why wouldn't we want people to fix up their one, two, and three-family homes? I don't, you know, condominiums. Look around the city, a lot of them could use some work. And this is not saying, let's pass this, it's saying that the city manager explore the possibility of doing something like this. Knowing the city manager, he's gonna look into it and report back to us. We're not asking you to say, okay, let's go forward with this, let's look into it, that's all it says. I'm voting yes.
Anybody else?
Roll call's been requested by Council Robinson.
Can you clarify the vote?
A yes vote would be to agree to the proposal in the order, a no vote would be to reject it. Council Vito.
Yes.
Council Lopez.
Yes.
Council Rodriguez.
No.
Council Brown, absent. Council Bishop.
Yes.
Council Tahada.
No.
Council Arizona.
No.
Council Robinson.
No.
Council Pilatanda.
No.
Council Garcia.
No.
Council Recupero.
Yes.
One, two, three, four in favor, one, two, three, four, five, six opposed, one absent, motion is defeated. Next order introduced by Council Recupero, order that the city manager look into having a real statue of John Ruiz made because he was the first Hispanic heavyweight champion that came out of Chelsea, and he was very proud to be from Chelsea.
Council Lopez objects.
Objected at first reading?
Yep.
Okay. Order introduced by Council Recupero, order that the city manager look into the city-owned property where the Salvation Army was on Broadway and see if it could be converted into a community center for the community with state funds, city funds from the CPA, Stabilization Fund, and Housing Trust Fund, and private donations.
Council Recupero.
I'd like to adopt on the suspension, if there's no objections.
Any objections? Seeing none.
Order introduced by Council Recupero and Council Lopez, order that the city manager instruct any new development that are aided by city money or any type of TIF, make sure that Chelsea residents have preference to get into these developments. These developments include market-rate housing and affordable housing.
Chair recognizes Council Recupero.
I'd like to adopt on the suspension, if there's no objection.
Any objections? So moved. Did you wanna speak on it or anything, or?
Yes, I'll speak on it. You wanna speak on it?
Council Lopez.
Yes, Council Recupero and I, we put this order, we had a subcommittee the other day, and we talked about how people from Chelsea being driven out, and when they do the lottery for the affordable housing apartments, most people that are getting it are from people from outside, and Council Recupero and I, we want to keep the people from Chelsea here, and priority should be Chelsea. Thank you.
Council Recupero.
As my fellow councillor says, if we want the people from Chelsea to stay in Chelsea, we don't wanna drive them all out. If they, because most of them can't, when they do these developments, they don't qualify, they've been driven out. So why not keep the people that are here, that have lived here their whole lives, and why drive them out? They should be entitled to have first priority. If the city gives any kind of incentive or money towards these places, the people should be entitled to stay here. Thank you.
Okay. Oh, are you raising your hand, Ryan? Oh.
Next order introduced by Council Vito, order that the city manager report back to the city council as to the status of the creation of a development master plan for the city.
Council Tahada.
Motion to adopt and file a communication under suspension for the state election.
Seeing none.
Order introduced by Council Tahada, request that the Traffic and Parking Commission rescind the daytime parking restrictions on Franklin Ave.
Chair recognizes Council Tahada.
Motion to adopt and file the communication under suspension, if there's no objections.
Seeing no objections.
Order introduced by Council Pilatanda, order that the city manager request to the Traffic and Parking Commission to put in signs at 92 Clinton Street on both sides of driveway reading, do not park close to driveway.
Motion to adopt on the suspension and speak on it, please.
Any objections? You have the floor.
Yeah, it seems like my neighbors at 92 Clinton Street seems with all the cars parking close to their driveway, with all the cars on both sides of the street have a tough time getting out of their driveway onto the street. They can't see either way out because of all the cars parked on both sides of Clinton Street. I myself have a hard time getting out of my garage sometime because of all the cars parked there. If the city manager can look into, having the parking commission looking into putting a couple of signs there, not parking close to the driveway, might make it easier for them to get out. Thank you.
Thank you.
We have three late orders presented.
Any objections to the late orders? To all three? To all three?
That's all you have.
That's all we have. Public announcements? I have a public announcement. One of the orders here, for the people that came, for the people that came about the 10% water discount, one of the late orders submitted was to open the conversations to talk about if there was a possibility to extend the 10% water discount to condo owners that don't have their individual meters. It was objected, but it will come up at the next meeting. And so I just wanted, for the sake of transparency, for people to know that. Do you have a public announcement, councillor? Go ahead.
It's basketball season, so Chelsea youth basketball having signups currently every Friday till November 9th from 5 to 8 at the Williams School. It's only $75 to play, and it's strictly for Chelsea residents. And also announcement is, I say happy early birthday to Councilor Garcia, her birthday is tomorrow, so I just wanna shout her out.
Any other announcements? Any other public announcements? A moment of silence? Yeah, there. Council Rodriguez.
A moment of silence for Ricardo Ariola, the father of Sylvia Ramirez's kids. He passed away two days ago, so I'd just like to have a moment of silence.
Also Officer Otero, and his mother's name is escaping me at the moment, Elisa Cortez Otero, she passed away as well. And also, the Etienne family lost their father, I think his first name was Fabio Etienne.
Peter Passwell, who worked at the Wyndham, which turned into the Doubletree, passed away.
Seeing no further business before us, we are adjourned.